I was thinking about how weird it would be if I just stood the entire time.
What's that?
I was wondering how weird it would be if I just stood the entire time.
I don't think anybody'd say anything. They'd probably wonder why, but.
You're right, right.
Is that the work area in shop now?
Well, but here's the thing, I like, I don't wanna.
Hmm, that's what I'm saying is.
Oh, that's, no, I'm.
Alright, it's five thirty. I'll call the meeting in order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, second.
Any further discussion? If not, all four say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? I had one question, Sarah. On the bills, the city of St. Cloud for sixteen thousand, what's that?
That is, uh, we will, we started receiving monthly invoices as soon as, uh, we, um, signed that connection agreement. Then effective January of this year, we had to start paying our fair share of what is our buy-in capital cost to the system. So you will see regular bills coming in. Then those regular bills will grow when we have usage and we will pay for our flows. So that is our portion of capital, um, current capital payments that we bought into once we connected. Or we, we signed the agreement essentially to be a part of their system.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? If not, all four say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Uh, open forum, anyone like to come forward and speak, come up to the podium, name and address, please?
Fifty-five, one zero zero five Ninth Avenue. I have two questions actually. Um, first one is I, and the trailer park and the north park are the Holy Park. I just didn't know if they were waters here. I don't know if you guys can help me with this at all, but maybe explain to me some more because we have people that are paying almost three hundred dollars for sewer.
I'm gonna divert that over there, 'cause.
Um, I think we, I think there was some questions. They did some improvements where they put in meters on the individual trailers.
Yes, every individual trailer has a meter.
And so I think what, I, I had to speak to our billing staff, uh, directly, but I believe what they're doing is instead of them paying and charging everybody a flat rate, they are now metering individual usage. So, um, that could result in some people's bills going up and some people's bills going down. Ultimately, how the trailer park charges is up to them. They're just responsible to us to pay their bill, how they, they split it out. I'd have to look. I don't have it in front of me. Yeah. If you'd wanna come in, we'd be happy to sort that out with you. I know, I think we've gotten a couple of calls from the individuals already. Um, possibly, but we're happy to, to sort that all out with you and get you some reports.
I'd like to know too, like, what's that, the average amount of water that you guys use in a holder?
We'd be happy to go through that too. It really depends on your size of household, lifestyle, um, but we can certainly provide you that information if you wanted to stop in during our office hours.
Yeah, yeah, I will.
Okay.
And then my next question is, stray cast. Uh, I'm gonna start trapping some stray cast and I wanna know what I'm supposed to do with it.
We will be discussing that further, I think, in the agenda, if I remember right.
Yep.
Okay.
So you can come back, second round.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else like to speak?
Um, my name is Shelby Wirth. I live at nine fifteen Ninth Avenue in Holy. Um, I have concerns over the water and sewage bill. I am probably one of the people that Cindy is talking about. My water and sewage this month alone was four hundred dollars. Um, I don't know how they split up my, uh, the sewage and water, but I can tell you, I don't feel any four hundred dollars worth of sewage and water. Um, I am a single mother held home, one heir household, one income, um, and I'm questioning how I'm even supposed to stay here in town. Um, I'm paying eighteen thousand dollars a month just in my bills alone to maintain my household, which is water and sewer, rent and house payments and electricity. Um, and I don't know how I can stay here. Um, I've been a member of the Holy community for most of my life. I moved here when I was ten. I work in the community at the nursing home. I'm an RN, um, and I'm struggling and I just, I just have lots of concerns because how am I supposed to maintain my household when you need four hundred dollars in sewage and water a month?
Thank you.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Um, so the council's clear. We don't bill the individuals. We bill the owner of the trailer park. The services come in and then that's a private drive the rest of the way in. So what they are getting billed is not by us directly. It is a pass-through from the property owner.
Okay. Sure.
Um, with that then, I know that per lot, we're always, or per unit for throughout the city, you're allotted so many gallons. Is, and then if you go over that amount of gallons, you get charged some extra service fee. Now, with the trailer park, are we considered one lot? So then we're paying all of these extra service fees per gallon because we're going over that two thousand dollar allotment. That's where my concern is. Are we being charged at one unit or is it multiple units because there's roughly twenty houses in the park?
What's the answer there? I don't know that answer.
So if you remember, we had some discussion quite a bit on this last year in implementing a per-unit charge. So each household is allotted, yes, twenty-five hundred gallons and then there's a minimum. So the entire trailer park has to pay at least whatever units times the minimum. Anything over would be at our normal, um, gallon, per gallon rate. So they're not charged extra in essence for gallons. They're just charged that same rate for the, whatever gallons the total park uses. But how they allocate that between the, the units or the trailers themselves, that's not our, your, our issue. Our issue is just to, how many units are out there? This is what the billing is. The property owner makes that determination. But I know they did do some work in installing some separate meters to track the individual usage because of some concerns on not being able to know what each trailer was using.
The city put meters in or the?
Nope.
The?
The trailer park owners.
The owners did, okay.
And you'll go meters and track the amount of water you use, not our sewage.
But we get, we bill on water usage. The sewer is, there's no split on that. It's just how much water you use and then the sewer comes off of that as well. So, yep.
And to clarify that, Sarah, that's two thousand gallons, not twenty-five hundred.
You're correct, sorry.
Cindy, how many lots are out there?
I think we have twenty-seven in the north and they're not doing any similar twenty-two, but they're.
Thank you. Anyone else for open forum? If not, uh, presentation of twenty-twenty-five street improvements. I don't know who's in charge of that. Jared, good to see you.
Alright, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, exciting new packet is our feasibility study for the twenty-twenty-five street and utility project. Uh, this study was authorized by the council for S E H to do back, uh, in November of twenty-twenty-three. Um, so kinda moving forward, Sarah, if you wanna step on through here. Uh, our project location for this twenty-twenty-five project essentially is from John Street to Murphy Street on, for Third Avenue. A little bit south of Chunk Highway twenty-three to Norman Avenue on Fourth Avenue. And then Chunk Highway twenty-three to Penn Street for Broadway Avenue. And then you'll have the side streets in between there. So Murphy from Third to Broadway. And then, uh, Parrot, Parent Street from Fourth to Broadway as well. Roughly one point, or sorry, point eight miles of road reconstruct is involved with this project. Uh, a little bit of history for this project area. Back in, the first back that I could find at least, um, was the two thousand nine, two thousand thirteen capital improvement plan. Uh, at that time, uh, the city had this project area located, uh, in purple there on the map, kind of in that top area there, um, projected for a two thousand eleven project. That was over, over a decade ago. Um, so we've kind of been, I don't know, marking and contest this. I don't wanna say abandoning it or limping it along since then, but we've, it's definitely in, in need of improvements here. As far as purpose and need of this project, as I mentioned, uh, deterioration of streets and utilities. Um, we need to improve the drainage in the area and there also need, we also need to address ADA requirements for our peg crossings. A little breakdown of the existing conditions here. I'm gonna lump it into avenues, streets and the alley. Broadway Avenue, Fourth Avenue and Third Avenue roughly are existing are what forty to forty-three feet wide, um, with curb, no, no gutter, so just concrete curb, no gutter. So that's, there, there's some issues with that as well. Um, Broadway has angled parking on the south side and also on the north side of those streets, of that avenue, of that, um, a- avenue. Uh, sidewalk is on both sides of all the avenues except for Broadway. Broadway only currently has sidewalk on the east side of that road. Um, as I mentioned before, non-compliant ADA pet ramps. Um, the original cast iron water main is under most of these streets. Um, except for the north part of Broadway, which was replaced in two thousand three, and then also the, uh, south portion of Third, that was replaced in ninety, in ninety-four. Under these streets as well are the original betrified clay sanitary sewer mains. Um, part of the city's issue is, or that they're working towards fixing is, um, the infiltration, I N I issue. Uh, replacing those mains are part of that, part of that study. Um, so moving forward that project, we plan to replace the existing mains under these roads. And then also, um, st- for storm sewer, there is storm sewer underneath Fourth Avenue. Uh, there isn't under Third and, Third, the north part of Third, except for at the highway. And the same for Broadway, uh, at the highway and also at Penn. There's a little bit on, on Penn. Uh, there isn't anything in the alleys. Um, and the south port part of Third Avenue has some, has some undersized storm sewer as well. Uh, Parent and Murphy are, well, let's start with the north, north one there would be, would be Parent. Parent is a twenty-foot wide, um, road with no curb and gutter. Um, and then Murphy Street, the third to fourth part is roughly fifty-five feet wide. And then the stretch between Broadway and Fourth is roughly forty feet wide. Um, there's no sidewalk along those except for the stretch from Third to Fourth on the north side of Murphy. Um, even that stretch doesn't, I don't think it goes all the way to, to Fourth. I think it's about a, one or two parcels short of making that connection there. Uh, and there, there's no water main or sanitary or storm sewer underneath those streets. Uh, the alleyway, um, jumping back to that, uh, the location map there, you don't need to jump, Sarah, but, um, we're replacing the alley from Murphy Street to Penn Street. That's also a part of this project. That existing corridor is roughly ten feet wide, no curb and gutter, uh, and no utilities as well on that stretch. Do you wanna jump to the next page?
Isn't that gonna get paved then, or?
Yes. No, at least, well, in our study, it's, it's, uh, being shown as being a paved surface, correct? Yep. Um, the existing conditions, this picture right here is from Third Avenue. As you can see, street deterioration, um, in there with also that, uh, as I mentioned, where you don't have a gutter next to your curb, like, like the concrete uniform pan. You do allow for areas for infiltration that way to get underneath your road service, surface. Um, and create issues with the freestyle cycle as well during that. Um, next picture is on Fourth Avenue North. Kinda showing the intersection, I believe this is Fourth and Murphy, if I remember right. Um, showing Murphy kinda coming in with that non-curb section. And you can't tell right in, right in that corner there, right where the co- where the curb ends, there's an existing storm structure surrounded by nothing but dirt. So all that dirt is getting flushed down your storm system without having that proper channel to, for that water to go through. And also right here with either pet ramps, um, showing that there's no domes there. Uh, and that's for, for the most part, as far as telling from the picture, that's really the big thing that you would be improving with the, uh, for the ADA compliance would be the domes. The, the ramp themselves look, look fine as far as, as far as grade, uh, next sheet. You could jump to the next one, Sarah. Yeah. So this is essentially, similar to our proposed typical section for Broadway and Third Avenue. We are proposing to reconstruct these two avenues with a forty-two foot wide paved surface with curb and gutter on both sides. Um, the angled parking will also be replaced on Broadway, so that we're, are, are maintained as far as the same location. So we're not gonna lose that angled parking for this project. Um, and then we will be replacing the sidewalk as well on, on this as far as where it exists today. So Fourth and Third will have sidewalk on both sides and Broadway, proposing this study at least, will just have sidewalk on the east side. Um, we are looking at, looking at a section, a proposed typical section of three and a half inches of batuminous, over fifteen inches of agri base, class five. And then a six-inch kinda subgrade, sub X if, when, if and when needed during construction. Jumping to Fourth Avenue, uh, I should say, I should probably, probably stated this already. Fourth Avenue is a county road, County Road forty-three, I believe. Um, and we are proposing to improve that street with a fifty-foot wide roadway, sidewalk on both sides. Um, and then, and then essentially the same section, but that has four inches of batuminous, so four inches of batuminous, over fifteen inches of class five. And then that subcut, variable depth subcut in there of six inches. Um, just for you guys to know, I guess, uh, this is the same sections that we, where we use for our Dewey Street project. Dewey Street was the four over fifteen and then Third and Fourth were the three and a half over fifteen. So that section there was what we're proposing here for our feasibility study. Um, during design, we will look at this section again when we do our geotechnical, um, whole. When a, civil borings are done, um, we don't do those, but when, when they are done, we'll be looking at that and evaluating this section again. Uh, we're looking at here, Parent and, Parent and Murphy Street, this is the same s- typical section as far as our road section. It goes to three and a half over fifteen. Uh, it's a little narrower corridor. Uh, this is a thirty-two foot wide paved road with concrete curb and gutter. Uh, and then sidewalk will be added on these streets on the north side to kinda connect everything.
Thirty-two or thirty-six?
Did I say thirty-two? Did I say thirty-six?
No, I said thirty-two.
Thirty-two, sorry. Thirty-two feet wide.
Thirty-two?
Thirty-two, yes. Yep. Um, and then jumping now to the alley. Um, that would be ten foot wide, sorry, twelve foot wide paved surface, no curb and gutter. So essentially the same footprint it is now, um, in ballpark, one foot up, one foot wider on each side. That's what that's gonna come out to. Um. What do we got now? Um. And Sarah, if you wanna jump to the next figures here, kinda running through this. This is showing where we are gonna be doing the improvements to the subsurface work. So this figure in front of you is the storm sewer. Uh, as I mentioned before, there's existing storm sewer on Fourth Avenue. So we'll, we, we will be replacing that, uh, as you work your way from Sonnybrook Creek on the south side of Highway ten, or sorry, Highway twenty-three, all the way to, to Norman Avenue. Um, and then we'll re, then we will be replacing the storm sewer on the south portion of Third Avenue. Uh, that's, that section is undersized. When we, when we, uh, we, when we reconstructed Third Avenue with the Dewey Street project in two thousand eighteen, we had, I believe it was a twenty-seven inch pipe coming from Dewey to John. And so we were going, everything's flowing that way towards, towards the creek, right? Um, with the existing condition that that pipe is in, I, I believe that pipe from John to the creek is only eighteen inches. So we, that's undersized. We need to, we have to put that into probably a, probably a, I think we are proposing a thirty-inch pipe for that stretch. Um, and there are no, there's, there's zero, um, storm sewer on, on, uh, Broadway. We are proposing to run that all the way up to Murphy, no, sorry, to Parent. Um, and then that north stretch, there's an existing, existing, um, storm sewer that we're not replacing. That's already there. That was installed in that two thousand three project. Jumping down to the sanitary sewer. If you have any questions, please jump in and, um, feel free to ask. Um, but same thing here. We're replacing the existing sanitary sewer on Third Avenue, um, with a proposed PVC pipe. And then the existing sewer does not have that, uh, that portion from Third to Fourth on Murphy. That is not, that, that does not exist currently. That is proposed due to, um, to shorten the length of services that are needed. Right now, they kinda come in at a weird angle to that one structure at the, at the corner of the intersection there. So we're, to provide a better connection for those services, we're proposing to extend that sanitary about half a block. Um, under Fourth Avenue, oh, jump back, Sarah. Uh, under Fourth Avenue, uh, we didn't make, we need to make the connection to the storms, sorry, to the sanitary structure on the south side of twenty-three. Um, with that being said, um, we do need to replace underneath the highway to make that connection. So on this one, we will be jacking boring underneath the highway, which is essentially jacking your casing pipe. You know, in this case, it'll probably be an eighteen-inch casing pipe, jack that underneath the road and then kinda auger it, all that material. And then install your carrier pipe, which is our eight-inch standard, um, sanitary sewer, install that through your ca- your casing pipe. Um, and then we'll keep, keep that going to the north, all the way to Norman Avenue, replacing the services along the way to the right way. And then same goes for Broadway Avenue, replacing that, connect to what we just installed with the Chunk Highway twenty-three project. Uh, I think that was now in twenty-twenty-two now, right? Yeah, it's been a couple of years. Um, but connect to where we left off on that project, with that project, we, we already did that casing on the highway. Since the intersection was ripped up, we were able to open trench. We took advantage of that opportunity and opened trench that. Um, but we'll be running sanitary from Chunk Highway twenty-three all the way to the north end as well. Now, water main, water main has kinda the same situations on Third and Fourth as the sanitary did, where we need to jack and bore the water main underneath the highway, same operation. Um, the only difference, the only difference on this one would be on Third Avenue, we're gonna extend that casing a little further so we can get underneath the box covert for the, the creek. But as we, as we work our way through this, um, Third Avenue will replace, we, we, we will be replacing the water main from John to Murphy Street. Similar to what the sanitary was like, there is no existing loop between Third and Fourth along Murphy. Um, talks, during our commi- our communications with city staff, uh, we feel it is, there's two reasons for adding that loop. Would be one, to shorten the services for the water main as well, you know, providing that better connection, um, easier to locate. Um, and then also that additional loop provides that, that stability in your flows, allows you to turn one valve off and not shut the whole block off. Essentially, you can kinda keep things open and usable for as many people as we can, if you have a loop system. And then it will be replacing the water main from, it's okay, I think I got that one, uh, replacing the water main from the Chunk Highway twenty-three to Norman Avenue, um, broad, on Fourth. And then from Chunk Highway three, Chunk Highway twenty-three to Penn Street on, on Broadway. Getting into the meat of probably why we are here tonight, uh, talk costs. Um, as I mentioned before, Fourth Avenue is a county road. And with that, um, we are working, working through, we have assumptions based in our feasibility study here, uh, based on past projects, um, city projects with collaboration with the county. That a hundred percent of the street costs for Fourth Avenue will be paid by the county and then sixty percent of the san- uh, sorry, sixty percent of the storm sewer will be paid by the county as well. Um, so you can see that reflected in these costs here where city costs for this project roughly five point one million, uh, one point four million for county costs. Bringing your total construction co- or total project cost to six point five million. Um, with projects like these, if you go to the next slide, um, with projects like these, with these, um, typically, city funds portions of these projects based off of assessments. Um, cities have that ability based off the chapter four twenty-nine statute within the state of Minnesota. Um, with that being said, the city policy is to assess up to, um, thirty percent of the assessable costs for surface improvements. Um, and those, those assessments are based on a front footage. Similar with the subsurface assessments, um, city has a, has the ability to assess up to thirty percent of those costs. Um, the water main and sewer, and sanitary sewer are assessed based off of front footage. The services are, are assessed based off of a per lot basis. And a lot is a buildable site, not a, not technically a parcel, but a, a buildable site. So if you have two buildings on your site and they both have a service, those are, that's, in my mind, that's, that's two lots. Uh, and then the storm sewer is based off of a drainage area of your, of that property. Again, all those are assessed at thirty percent of the project costs and the city covers the remaining seventy percent. All the parcels in yellow are in our preliminary assessment role. For our project. Not all of them have an assessment, um, particularly the ones off of Norman on that top right corner. Um, but we have them in there in case there is some adjustments to our project limits. We wanna make sure that they are included in our assessment and they're a part of the, part of that initial reach out. So we are. So we are able to assess them in the future if we make those adjustments in the future. I don't, based off conversations, I don't anticipate that, but it's good practice to have that in there. Next slide. Here are your summary of costs broken out to each kind of sub, sub, uh, sub item. We have a street cost, looking like we have roughly three point four million for total cost. Storm sewer is seven hundred and sixty-three thousand. Sanitary would be roughly nine hundred thousand. And the summary of water main costs is one point, call it one point two million. Again, these are estimated costs. We won't have final numbers until, unless we move forward with the project, bid the project and construct the project. At that time, we'll have final numbers. So these are based off of an estimate of the project. Per the city ordinance, I mentioned the I and I issue before, per the I and I ordinance, if and when a street reconstruction project occurs in front of your property, at that time, the property owner, if a property owner has a defective service, they shall replace that or make the correction to their defective service during the duration of the project. With this study, we have, went with the assumption that these property owners that, that are impacted by this ordinance will replace their service with our project. They have the option to replace it themselves and hire their own contractor. They have the right to do that. Many feel that it is simpler to just have the contractor for the road project do the work. So we've, we've moved forward with that assumption. Those private service improvements are assessed at a hundred percent cost to the homeowner for that work. So essentially that's from roughly the right of way to the home, however close they can get to with that, with that work. And those are based on a per lot, per lot basis. We're looking at roughly a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars total cost for that, for that work. So the rates, the assessment rates for this project. Now assessment rate is based off of the assessable cost, which in this case is thirty percent of the project per each subcategory, divided by the assessable unit, which I mentioned earlier as far as either front footage or drainage area or per lot. So with those, with those costs divided by that unit, we are looking at a thirty percent street assessment rate of one hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-eight cents per front foot. The alley would be sixteen dollars and thirty-one cents per, per foot. Sanitary sewer at thirty percent would be thirty-four dollars and sixty-five cents per front foot. Service, four inch service would be twelve thousand dollars, six inch, sixteen thousand dollars. Water main, fifty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents per front foot. One inch service roughly thirteen hundred bucks. One and a half inch service, which is a commercial service, two thousand bucks. And then there are, there's one six inch service for fire protection that will be assessed at, at the three thousand four hundred eighty-five dollars. Estimated to be assessed at that rate, I should clarify. Storm sewer at thirty percent would be twenty-five cents per square foot. And then the sanitary sewer, as we mentioned before, would be a hundred percent at that, two thousand six hundred eighty dollars per lot. Summarize project costs. We are looking at roughly an estimated city cost of three point four million dollars. Estimated assessments at one point six million. Estimated county costs of one point four million, bringing your total, as I mentioned before, six point five million for the total project. The next slide is our projected, our preliminary schedule for this project. As I mentioned before, you guys, the council authorized us to do the feasibility report in November twenty twenty-three. Tonight, we are here to potentially accept the report as is. And with that, you then would essentially be scheduling the improvement hearing and the neighborhood information meeting that we'll hold ahead of that improvement hearing. And then the rest of the schedule going through there would be, council would approve the plans if we move forward with design. Would approve the plans in January of twenty-five, bid in February twenty twenty-five, and then start construction in the summer of twenty twenty-five. With that, that is all I have unless you have questions for me.
How many years is?
Oh.
Go ahead.
All right.
Do we know, Mark, if we have any lead pipe up in that area?
Yes.
Is any of that lead pipe, is there federal money that can pay for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we, when we submitted our PPL application last year, we included that ask. It is, we are estimated to receive some of that grant funds. We need to, coming up here, May first, we need to submit, resubmit our PPL application for the twenty twenty-five portion of that money. And we're anticipating, I can't remember how many, Mark, maybe we have scheduled for that, but yes, there are, to answer your question, yes, there are some lead services that will be replaced, not with this project. It'll be a different, different project congruently essentially with this project that we're replacing the water services of the ones that are galvanized or lead from the right of way or the curb stop to the home, to the meter in the home.
How long are the assessments for? Is it ten, twenty years?
That, okay. That, that depends. We are getting projections run, so we got these numbers on Friday. And so they're over at our fiscal agent now to give us some projections on what a fifteen year would look like. That's what we've done prior, but these are higher than we're used to, just with the rise in costs. So I am having them run a twenty year as well. Just keep in mind, you know, we have obviously interest in, in, you know, fiscal costs obviously increase when you do the longer term. But that's, that's something that we will have to look at when we have the bonding agent come out, if the council decides to move ahead with the next steps of the project. What I can tell you though, just from a tax-based perspective, when we ran a fifteen year, in addition, we'd have the assessments portion, the early number we got was twenty percent across the board tax levy increase. Those were those numbers that I brought to the budget meeting last August. You know, that's the best number we're working on. There might be some shifting with how much is water sewer, how much is goes to the levy. There might be a little bit of shifting there. But we, we may see a little bit of improvement on the levy side, but then we might see an increase in the water sewer side. And we'll have those numbers as it comes, if we move forward with the next step.
To piggyback on that, the, those rates and that term length, they will be essentially finalized, correct me wrong, Sarah, that at the final assessment hearing November of twenty twenty-five.
Correct. Yeah, we don't issue the bonds until like we move the project ahead.
And then how many trees, I mean, there's, that's an older part of town.
Forty-three, I think.
Oh, you know that number already.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not a tree guy, but I know that, that's when you try and put sidewalk and everything, it's just a mess.
With this study, we are showing essentially removal of those trees within the right of way. I think there is, I think we had, like I said, forty-three of them. Similar to what we did with the Dewey Street project, I think every, for every two trees we removed, we installed one. And that's what we have for this, this study. During the final design process, we can definitely look at that a little further. Potentially maybe save some trees that aren't, that can be saved if they're not in the way of services or sidewalk improvements, things like that. And I know there are a lot of the fully grown mature trees along Fourth in particular are causing impacts to the sidewalk and into that curb. So ideally those are removed. But like I said, with this study, we are replacing the ones that remove at a two to one ratio essentially.
Any other questions?
With the curb, since it's, the streets are basically flat, we're not going to have the higher curb like we have out here on Dewey, are we?
No, that, on Dewey and on Fourth, you're talking about that, that two foot, eight percent.
It kind of goes up a little bit higher than normal.
That's due to you have those constraints of tying into buildings, door, doorway is essentially what they are. In this scenario, we don't really have that going on here, so I don't anticipate that. I mean, on all of the stretches except for the south part of Broadway, I guess in the north part of Broadway, where you have that Dino parking, there's going to be a boulevard in place. So you can use that area to kind of make up that, that slope transition there.
Does the county have regulations on their street there on forty-three?
As far as width or, or?
Height of curb or anything?
My understanding is that our, our typical B six eighteen min dot curb is sufficient for them.
Good.
Do the people that are on these streets already know if they've got lead pipes? I'm on Broadway North.
Uh, I don't think, well, they have, correct me wrong, Mark. The city has, is in the process of completing their inventory. So at some point, for, in order for Mark and his staff to do that, they would have to reach out to the homeowners to either get inside their home or have the homeowner take pictures. So based off of that, I think they're potentially aware of, of a replacement project coming in the future. Whether or not they've been informed, I don't believe, I don't think they have yet for this project area in particular. I don't believe so.
I don't know if any lead lines are fully, we have lead boost necks up there.
Okay.
So we do know we have some of that.
Okay.
But a galvanized, galvanized water line in MDH's eyes is?
Lead.
Lead.
Lead. True as equal, because of the, in the galvanized service, that's where those lead, those necks were installed with the galvanized services.
Okay, then another issue on my lot personally, I know it was not done right when they put it, did it last time. My driveway has like four different layers and it never, the sidewalk was never put from one side to the other of the driveway. And it's falling apart bad. Now, that's going to get corrected, I hope.
Yes, this project will cover everything with inside the right of way. So if you want to call it a foot behind the existing sidewalk is probably roughly where the right of way is at, ballpark. So everything can I, inside that line to the road and the road itself will be replaced with the project. You may have, we may have some, some driveways that go beyond that point to help with grading if, if that's needed. But I don't anticipate too many of those with this project. So to answer your questions, the sidewalk and driveway apron that I guess were installed incorrectly the first go on will be replaced with this project, yes.
Any other questions?
Back near the beginning for the project history. So the project history that happened two thousand nine, two thousand thirteen, that's the last time we did improvements on those highlighted sections of road?
So that was the improve, the capital improvement map. I could tell you that, that blue part, which is our Dewey project, that was not done in two thousand and ten. That was done in two thousand and eighteen. The orange part, which is Fourth Avenue, that was done in sixteen, I believe. The little blue part, Fourth Avenue South, that was done in fifteen, I think fifteen, that was the year before, right? It was the year before. I don't think the green had been addressed, to be honest. Sorry, what was it, Sarah?
We did Gopher.
Oh, Gopher, yeah, Gopher was a part of the Gopher and Badger, correct?
We didn't do Badger, just Gopher.
Okay, those were included with the Dewey Street project in two thousand and eighteen.
Any other questions? Well, what was done? Was it just resurfacing?
That was a CIP plan, our capital improvement plan. So like we have now a CIP that we hand out of your budget. We had been talking about doing this already.
For, for over decades.
Four, thirteen years ago.
Like doing this project?
Yeah.
They're talking about it.
We've been kicking it down the road that long.
Okay, all right.
So.
I just want to make sure I understood that correctly, that we, we've been looking to do this for a very long time. And we, and we keep on doing things, okay.
Other things keep jumping.
Right.
Hey, is there going to be a public hearing on where the people can comment on what we do?
Yes, yeah. So to that point, I guess Sarah and I will kind of maybe tag team this. Sarah mentioned earlier that the, if you look at, in the actual feasibility, not on the slot on the slides here, but in the, in the feasibility of the report is called the preliminary assessment role, where you can see each of these, each of these parcels individually, what their assessment total cost is. Their, their, preliminary projected assessed cost, right? Not final, so it's, at this point, there is, there's no assessment to these homeowners. But there are a few of those, if not most, that have some, some concerns that they, that the city are, are able to assess that dollar amount. Talking with city staff, we're in the process of working through that. I don't want to add anything else, yes, Sarah.
So whenever you do a street reconstruction project using statutory authority four twenty-nine, is what we call it, where you special assess a portion to the property owner, you have to meet what's called a benefits test. So you have to prove that essentially the, the value of the improvements you're assessing to the property owner, that that's a benefit in increasing the value of their property overall. And when you have like what we've seen in the last few years with costs rising quite quickly, you know, property values have to as well. It's just an important consideration for the council to know that that is something, there is a process in the four twenty-nine that a property owner can appeal that dollar amount. They have to go through a strict schedule of proceedings. But it's just, it's something that the council needs to be aware of that through this process, they could do that. One alternative that we've talked about at the staff level, and I've actually reached out to like another city that does, we could go through what's called an appraisal process. There would be some time and costs associated with that. But that would essentially take a look at these properties now to look at, to see if that benefits test is there to make sure essentially. There's, we've never done it before. We've never had an issue with it before. We've always had no concerns with meeting that benefits test based on the thirty percent assessment rate that we have. But you saw the assessment role. Some of you have been on past projects, you know, you can, you can see there's definitely a cost concern. One other way that we're looking at to try to help these property owners too is just with the longer term on the bond, if we want to consider that option. If you do want to do the appraisal, I can look into it, get you some pricing. It's probably going to take a little time to, for them to evaluate that. You don't have to do it. It's completely up to you. It's just another option that some cities have done just because of kind of what's going on with the economic conditions right now.
We go the appraisal process, city picks that cost up or is the owner have to pay for that?
The city would pay for that. We would essentially say, yep, we're going to invest. What are we guessing? I didn't get anything back yet because we just got the numbers. But you know, if it's fifteen thousand dollars, the city would pay for that process. And I'd, I'd come back with quotes on that if we decide to go that route. However, you do go that route too, I mean, the appraisal is the appraisal. So what, what that determines, that determines as well too.
Could be high.
Could be lower.
Or lower.
Yep.
Speaking of lower, does it need to be thirty percent?
It has to be twenty percent at a minimum to meet the four twenty-nine requirement. If, if you can't meet twenty percent.
Twenty percent of what you bond.
Correct, yeah.
Not, not of the project cost, of what you bond as a city.
So if we wanted to do it, if we did not meet the twenty percent, we'd have to pay all cash. We could not issue the bonds that we typically issue for this project. So that's another consideration. But that's, that's a level that's set in statute. That's not anything that we have to do with.
I'm going to add to that, the appeal process that you mentioned, that can, can start after the assessment hearing November. Because right now, up until that point, there's no assessment to, to appeal. This is all preliminary numbers. This is for the city's benefit information here to help you determine whether to move forward with the project, right? So like no assessment will be final until that assessment hearing in November of twenty twenty-five. And to answer your question, Sarah, that information meeting here, if we move forward with the project that, or with the process of this project, I guess, that neighborhood information meeting will be an opportunity where I'll, where I'll come in and present the same, roughly the same presentation and then interact with those residents that are being impacted by the project. And can I answer any questions you may have at that time? That's usually a week before that first public hearing, which is that improvement, or that improvement hearing, which is kind of where the next step for the council to move forward with the project on their end as far as.
So if you have comments, it'll be on June fourth?
Uh, you could come on the twenty-ninth.
Yeah, you can come, come on ninth and talk to, I can do my best to answer your question. Yeah, you can come in, come on ninth and talk to, I can, I can do my best to answer your questions at that time.
Oh, why she? Okay.
Uh, that won't, well, it may or may not be in front of council. Typically, it is not, um, in front of the council, and a setting like this would be that June fourth meeting.
I'll just add too, you know, um, the, the meeting, the improvement, like the, the neighborhood meeting is very helpful, cause it can just get those questions answered and get some additional feedback. Um, residents also, they can come to the hearing on the fourth, they can submit comments to the council, just like any other public hearing too. But that, that official hearing where it's part of the four twenty-nine process is the one that's tentatively scheduled for June fourth.
Is that council night? No, it is council night?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Debbie, had a question?
Yes, um, you mentioned a lot of the roads were between forty and forty-five, or it's a number factor. The state wants ten foot per one direction. How much do you allot for the vehicles for parallel parking and also angle parking? Cause then that doesn't seem like it's wide enough.
So on the stretches you're referring to, like on Fourth Avenue, there's a fifty-foot wide roadway, that will be a ten, a twelve-foot driving lane on both sides. Then that remainder will be parking, parallel, parallel, essentially parallel parking on those. Um, and then what was not mentioned in here was, was the width of the road, um, during the diagonal spots. Those are wider than that fifty foot. It's, that was your fifty, your typical stretch of, of Broadway is gonna be a, what did I say?
It's fifty to fifty-three.
Forty-two D wide, forty-two wide proposed, correct? Yeah, is what that's gonna be. Plus, the space needed to allow for diagonal parking.
So do we need a motion to adopt this resolution, or what are we at here?
If you wish to move forward with scheduling the public hearing, you would adopt the resolution tonight. Um, if you want us to, to, um, come back with appraisal numbers, we can do that as an option. We can, I, explore that option as you move forward to the preliminary hearing. I just, um, like I said, I don't have all the firm numbers back, just because we just got these numbers in on Friday. So we haven't gotten all that information back yet. It's really up to the comfort level of the council. You are not committing to doing the entire project at this point yet, though. I, I do wanna clarify that. You, you don't do that until you actually go through a, for, for the process and, and what we call ordering the improvement and, and actually putting it out to bids and then accepting those bids. There's a couple other steps before it's official, official, if that makes any sense.
Correct. That, March twenty twenty-five, uh, the council awards the bid consideration, that's essentially your last step to not move forward with the project if you choose to. You'll have tonight, the improvement hearing, you'll have approving the plans, and then awarding the project is kind of your four remaining steps in this four twenty-nine process that we need to follow. Continue with the project.
Mark, how old are the water lines and sewer lines under this, what we're talking about doing?
Reg- original.
Original. Old.
Since Christ was a kid.
Yeah.
Mark, how many times have you replaced water under four? Like, three times in the last?
Over leaks?
Yeah.
We did four in the last year, there were five, and we did a sewer main last November, right on the Murphy Street intersection there. Might have been four leaks.
I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I would look for a motion to adopt this resolution, twenty twenty-four oh eight.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made, seconded, any further discussion? If not, all four say aye.
Aye.
Up against, motion carried. Thank you, Jared.
Uh, just if I could, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Did you want me to look into the appraisal, or are we comfortable moving forward with it as is?
I think you're fit.
We can always get that appraisal some other time, correct?
Well, we're gonna wanna do it, though, we don't wanna wait till the end to do it.
Right.
So, um, I mean, I, I can look into it more, I just wanna know what the comfort level is of the council, or what you, what you wish to do.
Well, it's gonna benefit the residents, isn't it? To do the appraisal?
Yep.
Then I'd say we should do the appraisal.
I can just bring back more information at the next meeting if that's the consensus?
Please.
Okay.
Department reports, Police Department, Katie McMillan.
I.
Did I miss something?
Yep.
Oh, sorry. Review and approval of updated waste water agreement with Saint Cloud Regional Cities. Yeah, I, I did the wrong, so we should've done twenty twenty-four oh nine, right? Not oh eight.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's what I assumed you did, so.
Sorry.
We'll make that correction. Would you like me to overview this?
Yeah, I have no idea what.
Okay. This, this, um, updated agreement, um, is something that's been, we've been working on for many, many months, um, the collaborative group with the city of Saint Cloud. Um, the changes, um, in this agreement, some of them were driven by fully connecting and joining the group. Um, and then some of them were just, uh, an effort to try to simplify things as we move forward. Um, these changes include how we allocate the costs. Um, you've referenced, probably you heard the postage stamp and, and some of those areas that. That essentially is, um, just changing the way when we look at capital and how we all contribute to the different pipes as we share them. Um, we, we changed the methodology on that after reviewing a number of different alternatives. Um, it actually worked out a little bit better for Foley with that change, a little bit more positive for us. Um, but what it really does is it just simplifies things moving forward, so that as, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road, we add new projects and things. Hopefully, it's a little clearer what we all, um, have a part in. Uh, the other thing I just wanna make mention of is it's, it was the group of cities that reviewed this and provided input. Um, so it wasn't just Saint Cloud telling us, I wanna be certain that everybody understands that, we all had input. Um, and we participated in meetings and looked at these different things. Um, so it, it isn't just, you know, one entity, it's, it's all of us. And, um, we have to, when we join the group, when we agreed to join the group, um, we're subject to this agreement. Um, it also is going to lay out some better parameters for us to make swaps, have new people come in. If we need more, less capacity, somebody else needs more, um, helping with those situations as well, so that we can all best utilize this huge system as a whole. Um, I think, is there anything else that I'm missing, Mark? Kind of the big?
How were the topics?
Yeah, I know it's a lot to undertake, but the attorney has been through it. Um, the attorney actually represents other cities in the regional group, so they're very well aware of this agreement. I think, like I said, I think it's, it's good changes. I think it's actually more positive for us moving forward, um, and we just need to adopt it, as do all the cities. So that's what the resolution is presented to you for.
I make a motion. We, uh, adopt resolution twenty twenty-four, that's the only.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? If not, all, motion's been seconded, all four say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Now, we'll have Police Department, Katie McMillan.
All right, um, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, first I'll start off with our stat report for the month of March. We had three hundred and ninety-six calls for service in the month of March. Just a breakdown of a few of them. Um, as you can see, if you add up all our traffic stop violations, our traffic stops are actually down compared to the other months, however. Um, which is kinda alarming, are people driving with a revoked license or suspended license, that D A R S and C, those are actually up. So that means a lot of people are, we, we have, we've come in contact with, have, were, did not have a valid driver's license. Um, gas drive-offs were up compared to the last month, um, harassment calls, and our animal complaints are extremely up, uh, we had twenty. Um, and that, the animal complaints do take a long time, or not a long time, but they are time consuming for myself and for my other officers. A lot of them are dogs running at large. Reminder to all dog owners, you need to have your dog licensed with, with the city and keep it on a leash. Um, there's a few that I know where they belong, but I don't know where every dog lives, so. Um, and you can see the miscellaneous is up a hundred and eight. That's due to, we had a lot of inc- a lot of traffic hazards, like items in the roadway. We get out and we remove the items, everything's documented, uh, motorist assist, um, records checks, alarms. And also, we did our sex offender, um, yearly checks, we do them twice a year, make sure that everything is current, so that's in there also. Um, another, um, we had the, two Saturdays ago, we had the Community Connect Expo. It was a great turnout. Um, very, very pleased with how every, a lot of people came and it was great to see. Um, I will be at the Minnesota Chief Association Conference, um, April fifteenth through the eighteenth. So, if you need me, email will be the best way to get ahold of me. And also, um, we're talking with the Benton County, um, Sheriff's Office today. Um, I had a meeting over there for records, our new record system option. Um, they, we were talking about their staffing levels and how they are going to probably be short another deputy. Actually, possibly two deputies coming up here this spring yet. So when, we were talking about the Benton County Fair, they will for sure need our help, they said, this year. Um, and way up, look, the fair starts July thirtieth, I believe, and so with that, I will be bringing, uh, if it's right with the council. Like the last two years, we contracted with the fair board to have officers there. So I would do the same contract as we have, but I would just need to bring it to council's approval, probably in, at the June meeting or beginning of July meeting. Because there's not a meeting in August before the fair. So if that's, if the council is on board with us going forward with doing that.
If we're fully staffed, I'm fine with it, but if we're short-staffed, I don't see, uh, running to the fair as a good idea.
Correct. Yep, uh, we'll do the same as we have done in the last two years. The road gets covered first here in town, and then we would send somebody over if we have the extra staff to do it. Yes.
Very good.
But that is all I have, unless you have something else for me.
On these.
Oh, yes, the crime free would be next.
On these equipment violations.
Yep.
Are there tickets issued? Repair tickets issued for that?
Depends on what they are. I know window tint, um, there has been a few window tint, I, um, citations given out. Um, it's all officer discretion on that matter.
And they get so much time to repair this, bring this back to you.
If they get a fix-it ticket.
Yeah, right.
Um, but a lot of times, if they get a state citation, they just have to go and pay the fine, and sometimes they take off their window tint and sometimes they don't.
Right.
But, all right, and the other thing I have is, um, the crime-free housing training requirement. Um, Wade Park is hosting an in-person class on May sixth from eight-thirty to four-thirty at the Wade Park Police Department. I highly encourage our landlords to go to this in person, cause it's very beneficial in person. They get lawyers that specialize in landlord rights and tenant rights, and it's a very, I would recommend it to be in person. Um, however, when, at our last council meeting, we talked about what other options we can bring to our landlords to help them. Um, I do, I do have the books, and what I did do is, I, with my help of my school resource officer, the younger minds can know how to do these things. Um, on Google, they, you are able to make a test, and you can send out a test on Google Forms. So I was able to make up a test involving the information that's in the binder that I have. So we could have the landlords check out the binder and then read it, and then come back and sign off that they read it, and then take the test. And if they pass it, then we can give them a form, it wouldn't be the official Minnesota crime-free housing, but it could meet, you know, the Foley, city of Foley standards for it.
What did we, what did the landlords have to pay in Wade Park in the past?
Um, they are forty dollars. I know when I held the class back in, was it two thousand and thirteen? Um, it was, I charged thirty. So they're, they are forty dollars.
And it's just one time?
One time, and they, that forty dollars includes their lunch, too. They provide them lunch. And all the materials that they would need.
I have started reading the, the binder, and it is good, but again, in person is always better. It sticks in your brain better, and we've got some issues.
Is that an eight-hour class in Wade Park?
Yes, eight, eight-thirty to four-thirty. Yeah, I would highly recommend they go to that class, but if they are not able, then I would say.
Then do the Google thing?
Yep.
And there'd be a charge?
Yeah, that would be up to council.
I think a thirty-dollar charge is minimal.
If, if that's an option the council wishes to move forward with, we can, you know.
Discuss the next meeting.
Yeah, come, we may need to make an amendment to the ordinance, so, a, a tweak to the ordinance somehow, so we could come back with that information if that's what the council desires.
Very good. Any other questions for Katie?
Power to squads.
Um, tomorrow, the twenty-one squad goes in for the warranty work for the engine mounts. And the nineteen goes in next week for the fuel pump. Other than that, they're, I mean, the twenty-one still squeaks, but they say it's, they checked, they just checked the brakes last week for the oil change, and they're at forty, fifty percent for brakes. So they just squeak.
Anyone else? Thank you. Jared, you got anything else for us, or?
Uh, just one quick update. Um, since our last meeting, we did have that kind of local water treatment facility tour. Uh, I thought that was very beneficial to city staff and council. Um, but with that, we do have our Wisconsin tour scheduled for the eleventh. I don't think we have finalized numbers yet as far as we can come to that, just from a council and staff perspective, um, so we can set up transportation and whatnot. Um, so I was looking for maybe head count tonight, as far as who would be willing to go to that.
Amen.
On the eleventh.
I can go, but I'd be curious the time. All day.
Essentially all day. Uh, the agenda hasn't been scheduled yet, but I would assume we'd be leaving five or six o'clock in the morning, getting back about, about the same time in the afternoon.
Okay, yep.
Earlier, the better.
Yep.
I'm up for it, but it depends on the dog sitter.
I think I saw four hands then?
No, I'm out.
Yeah, four. Four of the five? Okay. Alright, thank you, that's all I have tonight.
Any other questions for Jared? Public Works, Fire, Mark Bappin, please.
In the packet, we got information, we've been talking about getting next step of the compost gate going. The price of the operator, the price of East Central Electric to bring the power to the site, and then the price for Design Electric to tie the two together. Think you have that at twelve thousand eight fifty for the operator, E C E is thirty-four hundred. That includes a power pole with a nightlight on it, so there's some extra charge in there. We'll have a nightlight permanently there, and then Design Electric are thirty-two, three thousand two hundred and seven for nineteen thousand four fifty-seven. Any questions on that?
It mentions, uh, PIN code. Uh, uh, did we talk about possibly doing cards, or were we talking about doing PIN codes?
Right now, it's just gonna have, we'll probably get door opener, that's gonna be a plus, we didn't have it, we'll get door openers for, will I have to get eight of them or whatever for our vehicles and the squads? And, but it's gonna probably have a keypad on it. Yes, this is capable of that, but I'm a, well, are we gonna have the money to do it this year? Are we gonna have to wait for next year to get the? Opener, the system, the card system in it, you know? Yeah, we kinda been, you know, doing one, we did that last year, we're doing this this year, and next year we'll probably do the other one, would be my. This is even a little more than I thought it would be for this, so.
So, there'll be like garage-style openers?
Just in our vehi- you know, the, some public works and.
So then, when it's open, you guys would go and hit the button to open it in the morning and then close it at night? So our hours remain the same as they are, or as we have been?
We, something we probably can tell, we can do a workshop sometime, we could talk about if. I mean, we're not, not to be mean, I mean, we're not closing it, it's easier if they wanna go out later and do it, I don't care.
I only thought with spending the money was, for us to spend the money to fence it off and everything else, is that part of its protection? And making sure people aren't dumping illegally, but then to be able to track who's going in.
Right, and. Unless we have money somewhere else this year, this is gonna kill the compost budget, I will say that, plus.
So it's, it's only what, twenty thousand dollars to get everything set up except for? So, it's, it's only what, twenty thousand dollars to get everything set up except for the passcode? Or, or except for the, the cards that we issue out?
Well, it's gonna be a system, yeah, like we have on our doors, we have to put out there.
Is there a quote on what that would be?
No.
In the future? Can you ballpark it?
No. I can't remember right now. It's not gonna be this.
It's not gonna be twenty?
We didn't pay this for the whole building here. Problem's gonna be, we have to have, uh, internet out there, so we need to make it work right, I think.
Otherwise, could we do? So, will there be a, an actual mounted PIN box to be able to put a code in? Like it, like it's, like it's stating on this?
I think it's just a one-number thing like the garage door.
Sure.
You know, it's basically glorified one of them.
I guess I'd be curious to know what it would, what's in a cost, I mean, if we're going this far, uh, I mean, ideally, you'd like to be able to open up the compost more.
We can get a price on that, I mean, I talked to them in March, early March, uh, over there. Just to make sure theirs would match what this is, that Ben Boom is putting in and both sides said, yeah, but I didn't. I don't remember what we paid for this building or the fire hall or the shop. Yeah.
But as far as, like you said, if you need internet to make that work?
There's ways to probably put a jump box out there or something, we're gonna have power there now.
So, you're looking for a motion for, what's the number gonna be?
What, I have it at one-nine-four-fifty-seven, nineteen-four-fifty-seven for Ben Boom fans, East Central Electric and Design Electric.
The council, anyone wanna make a motion for that gate quote or gate electrical, nineteen thousand something? What did we, did we budget for that? Budget anything for knowing that we wanted this, right?
Yes.
I, I mean, I'll make a motion to move forward with the plans to install electric gate. Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Discussion would be, would like to see what the quote would be for utilizing it, I guess, for, to its full potential. Uh, as other surrounding communities have used similar services. I guess the optimum thing would be if you would have that with key cards, someone could go out at any time and go in and out as they needed to? With a cost, I'm sure, for a yearly cost, subscription, whatever you wanna call it? That's what other counties or cities I've worked for in the past or with have done. Where they just buy the card, I mean, cards, buy them at cost, they're about fifteen, twenty bucks and if you lose it, you gotta buy a new one. Yeah. But then it also allows for us to see who has been in, so if.
And when?
And when, and so if there's illegal dumping, it helps us narrow down what's happening. Then it's just be, there'd be an access loop out, just drive over, correct?
There's an access loop in and out, that is added a couple thousand, but somebody gets locked in there, it's got the access loops.
Okay.
That's in Ben Boom that you saw.
Yep.
Yeah, we gotta do it.
But when you, it wouldn't be access now, it'd just be open or closed, correct? So, it's just future.
Same gates of operation?
Yes.
Mondays, Thursdays, Saturdays? Tuesdays, Thursdays, Saturdays, like, seems to work.
Okay. Any further discussion? Motion's been seconded, all four say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried.
Hopefully, another couple weeks, we'll get, and we said first of the month, now with the snow, we'll get it open. Another week or so, if it dries out, which it should, so. And other than that, I really don't have anything.
Any questions for Mark? Administration, Sarah Brun.
Okay, a couple things, um, we have audit next week, um, we did confirm we don't have to do a single line audit, which will save us, which is awesome. Um, this year, we will have to do it though, um, the next year and possibly the next two years based on our spending. Um, I put in the memo some information on the, uh, Humane Society contract. I'm not sure what your thoughts are, um. You know, like I said, we, we're still waiting for some more billings to come, um. I also know there's a lot of animals and we're, we're, we have concerns with that and even that was brought up tonight. So, I guess my question for you is, do you wanna keep the contract, do you wanna get rid of the contract? Um, do you wanna just continue to monitor it while having it? Really, it doesn't matter to me.
I feel that it's something we absolutely have to have, this is quality of life. The cats running around this town carry toxoplasmosis, which can cause women to abort their babies. They can cause pinworms, hookworms, and impetigo. And they're out running loose and a feral cat is a feral cat. And they're not safe. And I know, I live in a house, that the neighbors just moved out and left their two Siamese cats. I do not have two hundred dollars to take it down to the Humane Society. And they come every night at two fifteen in the morning and howl at the door. I don't need that. And we have to come up with something because it's reaching a point of being insane.
You know, with our current contract, the, the person dropping it off pays twenty-five, we pay the seventy-five, is that how it's been?
Nope, we have to pay it all.
And now it would just be all hundred?
Now, we have to pay all, if they euthanize it. If they euthanize it's a hundred. They don't always euthanize them, so that's an extra charge. Because they, they will no longer accept that participation fee.
Okay. So, either we pay the eighty dollars every time or possibly a hundred?
Yep.
We just wouldn't know until they bill us?
Correct, correct.
A hundred on top of the eighty?
Nope.
No.
Nope, they just add the extra, it must be twenty bucks to euthanize them. No, and they'll line item that when they get it, they'll tell us if they boarded it and then if they had to do a euthanization.
Well, how much? Should we just set a limit on thousand dollars for the year through the Humane Society?
Up to you.
I think we're already there, or just about.
I don't know if we're there, I'm still waiting for the next bill. I just know we get a lot of calls on them, yeah.
We already had some invoices though, right, for like?
We had three twenty-five in the first one, yeah. I mean, and usually that's, we don't see more than that in a year, usually, so. So, I think our budget's only three hundred or something for the year.
I mean, if we, if we make a budget, then we, you know, spread, spread the word to let people know to bring their cats.
Tell them to come up with something different, I think we should stay with contract.
Well, the, but we'd pay the con-, we'd pay the entire contract now.
Yep, yep.
The only thing I will say is I just don't wanna have, um, our staff, our police, Public Works people having to run them and that gets very costly, so that's another consideration.
Do we have, like, cat traps? If I came to the city with, I can't recognize you. But if I came to Katie or the city and said, I need two cat traps and I need them now. Can I find a cat trap somewhere in Foley? That I don't have to buy?
I had one and I gave it out for cats and I never got back.
Oh, that figures. So, I mean, I'd be more than happy to get the pests at my house.
I need some direction from the council here, do we wanna keep the existing contract the way it is or do we need to adjust it?
Is it a year at a time?
We just, we need to either pay it all or we set a limit of how much we're willing to spend as a city for them dropping off animals. So, if we say a thousand, we've already paid three twenty-five, haven't got another invoice yet.
Let's be humble.
I mean, a thousand might work, uh, but, or we say it's a thousand and once we hit a thousand, it's just, we either reassess at that time or we're just, or we say no.
And if they're microchipped and we have an owner's name, we fine them. And Waconia just started yesterday a leash-your-cat law. And I don't see why we can't do something of the same way. And if they're, if we know the owner, they gotta pay.
Well, I'm assuming most of these cats are not chipped. If they're running wild. I mean, I'd be fine putting a, a limit on what we do and reassess at that time to see how bad it actually is gotten, but I'm impartial at the same time. I'd say leave it as is then.
I'll just report back at budget.
Sounds good.
Yep. Um, other thing I wanted to make, uh, mention of is we did get, um, served the notice that there, uh, the police union will be in renegotiating with us. Their contract is up at the end of this year, so I will let, um, the personnel committee know that once they reach out, um, that standard practice, so nothing of concern there. Um, we'll just get going on that soon. And then, um, we are working on the south side housing stuff. Um, one thing, I, I did have to turn in some information to the county regarding, um, that agreement that you saw. We had some comments and they needed some additional information. What I do wanna bring to your attention though is that we do have, um, based on kind of our rough estimates, you know, we're looking at about two and a half million in gap um, that we will need to probably figure out some type of temporary financing on. That would basically be outside of that million dollars of ARPA, our portion, the county portion, um, until we sell those lots. So, if we can't get a private developer to, to, is this me tinging? Okay. Um, if we can't get a private developer in and the city does the development, that is something we'll have to consider. Um, we do have a couple options where we can do like a short-term bond or something that we could pay off or call early, but I just wanna make sure you're aware of that. That those project costs are estimated to probably be around three point six million to put that infrastructure in. So, more to come on that when I have, you know, more information. And I think they're doing some work out there recently, right?
Right, yep.
Yep, they've started some of the surveying and stuff already, so. Um, I think that's all I have for now.
Any questions for Sarah? Thank you. All business discussion on garbage contract. Consider renegotiating with Republic or soliciting for RFPs?
I'll just add that I put in, um, did you get the competitive bidding? So, you kind of understand there's a process associated with that, um, so if you do decide to go with RFPs, we have to follow those guidelines and such.
What? I thought you sent something that Republic sent to you? About not renegotiating?
No. They wish to renegotiate, they do not. So, I got a call late last week, um, they do not wish to extend the existing, they would rather renegotiate. So, our choices tonight are to renegotiate or to solicit for RFPs.
So, instead of just continuing with what we already had?
Correct, they have backed out of that now.
Okay.
So, when I talked to them after the last meeting, um, I'd asked if they could get me a, a final, like a contract and she said, yes, I will work on that and I will get that to you prior to your next meeting. And then she said, can I please re, is there a way to look at the meeting? So, I said, yep, you can go online and watch the meeting. And, you know, she asked why they're, why it was split, what happened, and I said, well, you can watch it, um, and, and make, you know, see what happened. Um, I think she, the rep that we normally work with had a meeting with their officials or higher-ups. Um, and then they decided they're just not able to extend that, they don't wish to extend that same contract term. So, they either wanna renegotiate or, um, they, they said they could solicit for RFPs too if you wish, you know, but that's, that's where they're at.
And when is this due by?
The contract expired June thirtieth.
Okay. Well, I think we should solicit for RFPs. It's basically renegotiating if you do an RFP, correct?
No, you would basically, they, they offered to put a proposal, if that's what we wish to do, but if we're gonna solicit for RFPs, it's not, it's not appropriate to have them provide their proposal and then the council to change their mind.
Right.
So, yeah, that, that's why I indicated, let me talk to the council and have them decide what they wish to do.
What would the council like to do?
Well, if we change, if we change entities, what, what all consists of, what's gotta be done? Is it gonna be any cost to us? Uh, some, what's the hassle, uh, how about the admin change and everything?
I, I can't speak for Public Works, you know, exactly their side of what they had to deal with, um, I can tell you numerous, numerous phone calls for weeks straight. Um, I don't know what it is, it's just a sensitive topic, it's, you know, it's just the transition, just people aren't sure what to call, who to call, when they put their cans out, you know, when they're coming to get them, where do they get their new cans, it's just a lot of logistical things. Um, so that, that's, I know one thing that we talked at our staff level, I'm not sure what, what Public Works had to all do when we did the last transition. I think we had a place they picked up, didn't we?
We stored the cans down at the shed. For them.
Is that what it was, but they delivered them?
They delivered them all.
Okay. Um, the other thing we have when we, we have to draft an RFP, so that's a significant pro, you know, like undertaking, cause it has to be reviewed by legal too. We have to verify insurance, those type of things. Um, I have some old ones in the file that will probably help, um, but then we have to advertise in a certain way, we have to, you know, accept the proposals. And then, uh, the council reviews the proposals essentially and makes a decision. Um, I'm assuming the contract, like, parameters or what you desire would be similar to what we have. Um, you know, and some of the things that we have built into our existing contract. Um, but if there are any significant changes that you'd like to see, I would need to know those and we need to build those into the RFP.
So, if we like everything the way it is, we're just looking for maybe better pricing, essentially, unless there's something else we want added?
Yeah, I mean, you can use the, I can use the prior ones, you know, as a starting point, um, but we still gotta review it and go through it, cause it's been five years.
And because it was five years, wasn't it, had they just rolled over to the next five years? That would have been a four and a half percent increase, correct?
Four percent was what was built into the contract.
That means if they wanna renegotiate, it could be more.
It could be driven to with like fuels kinda going crazy right now. I'm sure, that's not helping, I know, you know, from a garbage, I don't understand the garbage side of things completely, but, you know, there's a lot of economic conditions that would go into that proposal and so forth.
And then this would be another four or five-year proposal?
Oh, I would do at least a five, yeah. It, it's hard to, it, it's a lot of work to change a garbage provider, so you don't wanna be doing it every year.
Right.
And it's also, you're not gonna get competitive pricing if you're only gonna go out for one year. It's a lot of work for them too.
To me, as long as we have to renegotiate with Republic and we have a person in the area that's also interested, I think it's a wise decision to open up a bid.
I agree.
I think we're gonna need a vote on that though, just to make sure it's clear.
So, we need a motion or do we need a?
I would prefer a motion on the record if you wish to solicit for RFPs.
So, would someone like to make a motion to renegotiate with Republic or would someone like to make a motion to solicit for RFPs?
I'd make a motion to renegotiate.
Motion's been made to renegotiate with Republic, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion?
I need to clarify, does that just mean you're renegotiating with Republic? Or is that, then you're not opening it up for other vendors?
Correct.
Any other questions? Motion has been made and seconded to renegotiate with Republic, all four say aye.
Aye.
No.
Against, I'm sorry. Against, no, no, three, two is what I've got for renegotiate.
To renegotiate, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And who?
Motion carried.
You were an A?
I was an A.
Okay.
Deb was an A.
Thank you.
Three, three. All right. Any new business? Schedule any necessary council workshops.
Based on our prior discussion, I'm just kinda putting that as a placeholder if there's something in addition that you wish to add for future meeting.
Does anyone need anything on this?
I would just say that if it's something that's really necessary that we gotta spend some time on, it's advantageous.
Okay.
But I, I don't think it's anything that we have to set up once a month, I think.
Sure.
However, I think it depend upon the situation, the discussion, whatever. Good idea. I think we should use it. But don't have to have it in our, in our, in our, so much.
Yeah, I agree. It's, it's, uh, you know, I think about even, you know, last budget session, we talked a lot about, you know, putting money away for parks and what, we talked about ideas for the parks. Well then, when comes a step of actually talking about who's gonna do what and when and how we're gonna act, and what projects are we gonna do? Um, and those I feel are better served maybe in a planning or a different type of setting versus this particular setting.
I agree that sometimes we need a little bit more time to
Well, just, to, just discuss, talk it out. Who's, who's gonna do what, when, um, and so when we budget for these, these kinds of items, you know, talking them out and actually figuring out when will they take place? And who, and who will do them.
After the meeting works out well.
Yep. Any other new business? Second open forum, if anyone would like to speak, come up to the podium now.
In regards to the contract with Humane Society, um, maybe they're considering contracting with a local rescue. Um, I know there's several in the area, um, trying to, um, there's no lack of, to have some, and maybe the great effort. That might be a more cost efficient, um, solution to try to.
Thank you, Shelby. Anyone else?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to thank, uh, Foley Rescue and Foley Police Department for an incident that we had at Easter Sunday. Uh, professionalism was at its best and I thank you.
Anyone else? If not, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
The move.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all four say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion or, uh, meeting adjourned?
Yeah, like so when it comes to, so it's park and rec stuff, that we can spend a little bit more time. Sometimes we have to.
We have all these ideas.
Yeah, exactly. I mean.
What do we, what do we actually, yeah, we have.
I think it's.
Let me prioritize which, which item do we do this year, next year and actually.
So it gives us a little more.
For planning.